Our next speaker will be Hannah Marshall.
Hello. I'm nervous, so bear with me. My name is Hannah Marshall. I'm a Spanish teacher at New Haven Academy. I love my school and I love New Haven, but I feel like right now, New Haven doesn't love me. Like many teachers, I live paycheck to paycheck and I've been forced to seek secondary employment because, just to pay my bills. After 10 years in New Haven, teaching in New Haven with a master's degree, I still only take home about $1,500 of paycheck. With the average cost of rent in Connecticut, around $2,000, I think it's typically more in New Haven, that means for me and many others, more than half my paycheck goes just to my rent. And I feel like this is unacceptable. I have the normal, basic insurance plan. I have no extra money coming out for retirement. And at this point, I feel like after 10 years, I still feel like I won't be able to retire with what I currently have if it keeps going the way it's been going. So I'd like to urge the board to prioritize in the next budget, teachers' salaries. And don't drive teachers away from New Haven, invite us in. I want to keep teaching in New Haven, but I know other districts pay more. But here to say, pay us a decent wage, pay us, hopefully we can match those other districts. I have one other ask of the board, and that's decent working conditions. I don't know if you remember, but I stood here about this time last year and asked for... So our staff bathroom locks are still not working, which means every time I have to use the bathroom, I'm afraid that someone's gonna burst in on me and there could be kids in the hallway, which there often is, because that's the time that we have to go to the bathroom. And I just feel like that shouldn't be an issue to begin with, and it certainly shouldn't be an issue a year later. So I would ask if there's something that can be done in our next contract to state that there's maintenance follow-through or maintenance updates. I know it's not for lack of trying at the building level. I would love to see that in the contract as well. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Annaliese Jorgensen.
Thank you, members of the New Haven Board of Education, for listening to us today. We are the school librarians working in your district. I'm Annaliese Jorgensen from Fame in East Rock Schools. We are here to show our support for a contract revision that respects the needs of the teachers and professionals who work with our students. School librarians need adequate prep time because we support our school communities in many ways. This may include being specials teachers, assisting classrooms with research literacy and STEM projects, helping teachers and students find materials they need, teaching students lessons on media literacy and internet safety in this fast-paced digital world, grading assignments, which often takes many hours a week, and even acting as last-minute substitute teachers. This is all on top of needing to manage the library itself, organizing and shelving literally thousands of books per school, researching and ordering new materials that engage students and align with the curriculum, fixing damaged books, checking out books to students and teachers, and maintaining this space itself. We serve the whole school and a wide range of students, sometimes teaching kindergarten one period and then 8th grade the next. We have many tasks to accomplish and not a lot of time to do them, especially for those of us who work in more than one school. Having adequate time to prep gives us the ability to keep our libraries running smoothly and to be able to provide the best care to our school communities. We echo the demand for fair pay and benefits. We love our students here in New Haven and we want to continue to support them. However, we also need to be able to support ourselves and our families while doing this important work for our school communities. This includes good healthcare benefits. We also experience unsafe conditions that need to be addressed as soon as possible. Many of our libraries have temperature extremes. Last week, my room was so hot that Play-Doh was melting and a colleague told me she experiences symptoms of heat exhaustion from working in her library. We worry that the black mold and peeling paint we see on our ceilings are harming our students' health. We support the push for smaller class sizes and better support for students with special needs. Like all teachers, we strive to build relationships and attend to the unique needs of each child in our charge. It becomes far more difficult to do so when we are also trying to manage large groups of students. Children with special needs and our youngest students need support from paraprofessionals. We school librarians are in the front line of supporting the literacy goals being put forth by the New Haven Public Schools. Please help us in our continued efforts to increase reading scores by showing our students the sheer joy of reading. Like you, we want our children to grow, to love the process of reading and learning so that they can grow up to be thoughtful adults who continue to do good for New Haven and our world. Thank you for your support.
Next up is Jillian Lynch, followed by Dario Solzmann, followed by Teresa Purdy.
Good evening. My name is Jillian Lynch. I'm the general music teacher at Nathan Hale. This is my 14th year teaching, all in New Haven. Just this weekend, someone asked me, again, why I stay in New Haven. I love my students. I love seeing them perform and I love seeing when they're proud of themselves. I love my coworkers, our willingness to help each other and the friendships that I have made. With that all said, we had retirements and resignations last year and now, September 22nd, we still have vacancies in my building. Our teachers are spread thin and need better financial compensation for the work they do. We have students that need more of our love and attention than ever, while also needing to teach them the content that they need to become independent and creative thinkers. We need increased staffing and caseload ratios because the future looks unrealistic. We need lower class sizes, especially for our youngest and most vulnerable students, pre-K, kindergarten, and students in special education. But it's not just the youngest population. Our parent union, the American Federation of Teachers, is a strong advocate for reducing class size to help raise student achievement, and this is directly from their website. "Large gains in both math and reading stem from more effective teaching and more focused learning. More teacher-student interaction allows teachers to recognize the needs of individual students and customize instruction and assignments." I read a book over the summer that was about the accessible music classroom for all, but making it accessible for all means meeting the needs of every student and when it's 20 versus 26, that makes a big difference. "Teachers know the students better and can recognize problems and special needs early. Further part, students are more likely to be on task and less likely to talk amongst themselves. They create fewer discipline problems and engage in more pro-social behavior, allowing teachers to devote more time to instruction and less to controlling the class." Our working conditions are our students' learning conditions. I am not asking for anything that would not directly benefit our students while helping us retain teachers. Thank you.
Oh, actually, that's Ben Scudder, followed by Teresa Purdy, now followed by Katie Yates.
Right. Hello, board. Before I start, I do want to say, I feel like some of the things I want to say are gonna be things you'd want to respond to, and I would love for that to be a thing we can do at these meetings. The Board of Alders, as an example, you know, has public participation that is not limited at all in time and also allows for a response from the Alders. They could be a policy worth considering here to make this board a little bit more of a two-way conversation instead of just us sort of talking to you and then you not being able to respond. Now, my name is Ben Scudder. I teach at high school in the community and I have a sign here that says, "Show us the money in an itemized budget." The reason I... The reason I have this sign is, you know, last spring, we were told, "Oh, we might not be able to have librarians in schools. We can't afford them, right? We're gonna have to cut all these cuts." Now we're being told, "Oh, we might not be able to increase, you know, teachers' salaries" or that, you know, "You might have to take home less money this year than you did last year" because we just can't afford it. And I understand that federal cuts are coming. I understand the state is not pitching enough money, absolutely. But I don't understand why I, as a citizen of New Haven, can't know where every dollar that I spend in taxes goes in this city. I understand. I understand that times are tough and I want, as Leslie said earlier, well, I want this to be a time we work together, but there needs to be transparency here. And right now, there isn't. I mean, I don't know why we can't have librarians, you know, because I don't know where the money that could go to librarians is. You know, I don't know where any of the money is. So I think that that's really the takeaway I would like to leave you with today. I also just want to mention, as folks have said and as we're here tonight, our schools are falling apart. You know, we had students last year go up to Hartford and on the train ride up there, it was 80 kids from New Haven. You know, Mr. Mayor, I know you were there as well. And one of the things that really stood out to me was that kids started off upset about their buildings and then they talked to kids in other buildings and realized, "Oh, it's not just my library that has mold. It's every library in our schools in New Haven." At least, that's what it felt like for them. And so I want our schools to be ones that teachers and students can be proud of. I think we can do it. All right, we're in one of the wealthiest states and the wealthiest country in the world. If we can't do it here, where can we do it? So... I want this, I want this to be a collaborative process. I want us to work together because I really believe that if you're on the Board of Education, you're there because you care about kids. You know, I don't think that you're villains. So I want us to work together to figure out how we can have the schools our students deserve because ultimately, that's what this is all about, is making sure that our schools are the best they can be for the kids that we serve. Thank you.
After Ms. Purdy, Katie Yates, Andrew Rice, and Ellen Wicks.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Purdy. I'm a business education teacher at Co-op High School. It was only two weeks ago, I, along with our state treasurer, thanked this board for supporting financial literacy and recognizing the importance of educating our youth on these critical life skills. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of all of my New Haven education colleagues, asking the board to turn words into actions. Our students and educators are still feeling the effects of cuts, closed schools, eliminated positions, larger class sizes and caseloads, and fewer resources and less support. Our dedicated educators continue to have to do more with less. This includes setting up schools and classroom spaces on our own personal time and spending a lot of money out of our own pockets, unnecessary supplies for kids. Additionally, I'm speaking for you, before you tonight, as one of those teachers bringing home less money. This year, due to the skyrocketing health insurance costs, this is unacceptable and it's time to fix it now. By coming together to support the New Haven Federation's efforts, teachers' efforts for a fair contract, we can ensure, one, every student has a certified teacher in every class. Every school has the support and resources that all students need. We retain experienced educators and attract quality teachers to our district. And four, a more transparent and accessible New Haven public school budget where the community is actually part of the budgeting process. Our message is clear. Our New Haven Public School community deserves transparency. Our students deserve fully staffed, resourced, and well-maintained schools. And our members deserve and respect a fair compensation for the work that we do every day. We teach our students financial literacy, enable them to budget responsibly, and understand that every decision has consequences. If we truly value financial literacy and its lessons, let us demonstrate it properly by funding our schools. Show our students that when we say "education is an investment in their futures", we can make that investment together. Thank you for your time.
Katie Yates, followed by Andrew Rice, Ellen Wicks, and Janet Gonzalez.
Hi, my name is Katie Yates. I am a creative writing and English teacher at Co-op High School. It's nice to see you. And I would just like to share with you that I have a dream. I have a dream that when... Okay, so I have a dream that I live in a country where things have not gotten worse for going to school. That when I went to first grade, it was right after desegregation in Washington DC and my friend was spit on because she was black. And now, my son goes to school at a school where one of his classmates was taken away by ICE and put into detention. So I would like to dream about a country where schools are a place that things are getting better and that, you know, all of us excellent educators are able to do what we need to do. And I also have a dream that the paper doesn't say that 98% of teachers in Connecticut experience burnout. I'd like to, I have a dream that we would see teachers as valuable members of society who are sharing what they know with their students. And often, people say to me, like, "Thank you for your service." Like, I'm a, which is, okay, like, I'm a vet. So I have a dream that we, that we value teachers for what they do. And I also have a dream that when we talk about how we pay for things in the schools, that there is a real understanding about why a cafeteria worker earns X amount and why a superintendent works, I mean, earns another amount. And that I have a dream that schools do not recreate a class system and a sort of capitalist inequity that we don't really need to be teaching our students. So for example, I would have a dream that my principal, instead of saying, "Could you please make your class look nice?" You know, "We ordered some paper for you to put up in your classroom." I would like my administrator to come help me make my classroom look nice and also give me a classroom so that when I started the year, I knew what kind of classroom I needed to make look nice. And yeah, I just have a dream about a fair and equitable contract that we all love. Thank you.
Andrew Rice, followed by Ellen Wicks, followed by Janet Gonzalez. Andrew Rice.
Hi, everyone. My name's Andrew Rice. I didn't realize I was actually signing up to make a public comment. I thought I was just signing something to say I support the people making a public comment. But since I am here to speak now, I guess, I'm just, I'm just really saddened by all of this because our country always says that the most important thing we have is our children. And if we really believe that our children are our most important thing, why are we not putting all of our resources into our children, starting with their education? And starting with the, thank you. And starting with the people who are the fighters of children's education, the teachers. How can teachers be delivering the highest quality of education to our children if they're struggling at home, if they're struggling to get healthcare, if their own family is struggling? We, you know, we can always find money for police. We can always find money for war. We can always find money for bombs. But why can we never find money for children and for teachers to have these small classroom sizes? I mean, I remember 25 years ago when I was in school, you know, I had teachers and the classrooms were 15 to 20 students. And now, I, you know, I was able to get my master's degree. I was able to have a really good life because teachers were always there for me. And today, no one's there for the teachers. And it's just very upsetting to hear all of these people here tonight saying that they love their children, that they love the people that they're working with, that they don't want to go. And they have so much passion and conviction. I'm just wondering, when will that passion and conviction be met by the Board of Education and deliver the results that these teachers need to ensure that our children are getting the education that they deserve in the greatest country in the world, in the greatest state in this country? So that's all I really have to say because, again, I didn't have any prepared remarks because I, I guess I need a teacher to tell me what I should do. Yes, thank you all for your hard work and please keep fighting for our children. Thank you.
Ellen Wicks, followed by Janet Gonzalez, followed by Diana Robles.
Good evening. Hi. Thank you. Oh, right, of course. Hi, good evening. Thank you for listening tonight and for being there for our students. My name is Ellen Rikus. I'm a 10th-year teacher here in New Haven. I teach at the Sound School and I'm a Spanish teacher. Thank you. I want to echo what everyone else is saying. I love my job. I love my students. And I want my students to have the same resources that other students have in other districts across the state. It is incredibly unfair that my students do not have those same resources. I go, Sound School is a place where we have students from different sending districts. So the students can see the disparities and we can see the disparities as well. They understand what New Haven does not have because they go to school with kids from other districts, with students from North Haven and Branford and all of the other districts that seem to have more resources than them. And I think that takes away from their learning. Like, we were talking about the pride that students should feel in their building and their teachers and themselves. And it's something that that's difficult to maybe understand or see if you're not in the classroom with these students every day, but I am. I am here tonight for my students. I am here tonight for my coworkers across the district. I appreciate, again, you listening to us and I hope that you will keep these comments in consideration as you go through negotiations. Thank you.
Janet Gonzalez, followed by Diana Robles, followed by Caitlin Romchesku.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Testing, testing, okay. Hello, my name is Jafet Gonzalez. I am a senior from high school in the community. Honesty, we need to start being honest with ourselves and others. Honest means the truth and you want to know what the truth is? We need help. Help when it comes to our schools, help when it comes to our teachers and staff, help when it comes to the future of our district. We need basic help that shouldn't be a stretch to ask for. I shouldn't be here. A student who is a senior, who is applying for scholarships, colleges, starting a capstone project and completing requirements for graduation? I shouldn't be here. A student who is actively running a magazine club, 9th-grade mentorship program and outdoor leading, leadership program at my school? I shouldn't be here. A student who is constantly keeping up with schoolwork day after day and trying to have a thriving social life? But I am. Because our students, teachers, and schools deserve more. They shouldn't be here. The teachers who have assignments, they could be grading and lessons, they could be planning, but choose to come here instead to advocate for themselves and for us? They shouldn't be here. The teachers who know there are better positions elsewhere but choose to stay because they love us, their students. They shouldn't be here, but they are. Our teachers do so much more work for our schools and our communities than they are paid for, including showing up today, attending protests and rallies, going on unpaid trips for their students, and so much more. That's the thing about our teachers. They don't quit when things get hard or do things for the money. Our teachers do what they do because they truly care about me and my fellow students. But they shouldn't have to choose between caring about us and making enough money to support themselves and their families. That's just wrong. And if we keep treating them like this, some of them will have to leave. We need our teachers to say, "So treat them right." Teachers' working conditions are students' learning conditions. That means what's good for teachers is what's good for schools and what's good for schools is what's good for everyone. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Diana Paola Robles Manzo. I'm a student at high school in the community, a proud senior, and I'm a resident of New Haven. I believe that every day is a new opportunity for growth and learning and that every student deserves teachers who put their heart, energy, and dedication into giving us a quality education. Today, I'm not just speaking for myself. I'm speaking for my classmates, for students across New Haven and Connecticut, and for teachers who have dedicated their lives into helping us succeed. Teachers are the foundations of our schools. Without them, school simply wouldn't be the place of learning and opportunity it is today. They do so much more than just teach the curriculum. They go above and beyond, both inside and outside the classroom, to make sure we are supported and encouraged. Two teachers who have personally made a huge impact on me are Ben Scudder and Amy Brzezinski. During my senior year, one of the most stressful years of high school, I spent a lot of time after school preparing for the SAT, usually focusing on math. Ben patiently worked with me and answered questions again and again, my endless math questions, and mind you, he's a history teacher. Amy, who couldn't be here today because she's once again volunteering her time to help with the school trip, has also been a constant reminder of what it means to go above and beyond for our students. She was my English teacher sophomore year, but to me and many of my classmates, she's much more than that. She uplifts her students every day, recognizes our strengths and weaknesses, and pushes us to our full potential. For example, my friend Jafet, who is here with me today, and I have been motivated and inspired by her encouragement and is a big reason as to why we're here today. We're here today with the support of our teachers, able to read this testimony to you because of our teachers, able to write this same testimony because of our teachers, and luckily, get a good SAT score because of the teachers who stepped up even when they didn't have to. It is undeniable, teachers provide a critical support system to both, to both in and out of the classroom. Teacher provides support system that extends far beyond academics. They inspire us, motivate us, and remind us that our futures are worth fighting for. Thank you for giving me this opportunity and thank you for your time.
Caitlin Romchesku, followed by Dario Solzmann, followed by Michael Vigil.
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Romancik. I'm a New Haven resident and I work as a 7th-grade English teacher at ESUMS. I love New Haven. I love teaching my students and I love working at my school. I've worked under a DSAP the past three years and this is my first year certified. I, like many other teachers, live paycheck to paycheck. My current rent is well below average, around only $1,400. I don't have kids and yet I still barely to manage to afford living. So I can only imagine what it's like for my teacher peers. I currently work as a cross-country and track coach year-round at Trumbull High School, so every day I have to leave work right after the school day ends in order to go to my second job. Though it's a job that I love, I would not be able to afford my rent and bills without it, which can at times make both my jobs feel much more like something I have to do rather than the passions that I want them to be. Without prompt, I've been told by several other younger teachers to leave New Haven and go anywhere else to get paid better. I don't even have to bring up how much I make for them to try and convince me to leave for this reason. I believe the solution is increased wages at every level, not only to retain current teachers, but to attract new teachers. I look forward to this being a point of negotiation at upcoming contract meetings because I wholeheartedly believe this is crucial. In order for teachers to truly take care of their students, they need to be able to take care of themselves first. Thank you.
Dario Solzmann, followed by Michael Vigil, followed by Melissa Azari.
Hi, my name is Dario Solzmann. I'm a teacher at Wilbur Cross. And so I want to begin my comments by talking about an experience I had a few weeks ago trying to get some of you, my fellow teachers, to get involved in our contract negotiations, which we're gonna be doing at the, starting at the end of this month. And I was trying to convince them about the meaningfulness of this and so I was using my teacher techniques, things like fist-to-five and thumbs up, thumbs down. And among the things I did ask them, because I know that this is the reality we all live with, I asked them first, fist-to-five, what is the severity? What do you feel is the severity of the problems that you face in your schools and in your job? Fist-to-five. This was a big group of teachers. It was all fives and a few fours. There was one three. And then next I asked them, thumbs up, thumbs down. Do you believe that our employers will solve these problems? And it was all thumbs down and a few to the side. And I say that because although this is a board of education meeting and I do want you to hear all of the great ideas that our teachers have here tonight and the ideas I'm going to say, I also believe on some level that the most important audience that we are speaking to tonight is each other. And so because we know, we live in our buildings, we make our schools run and we know what it is our schools need and you've said a lot of these things. We need salaries and benefits that allow us to live a decent life in Connecticut and not get a second job. This is not happening for far too many teachers. We need class sizes that are going down, not up, because the best method for achieving differentiated education is a smaller class size. And we need more teacher control and input over professional development and staff meetings. I've been in this district for four years. The best PD that I have experienced consistently, consistently is teacher run. Now, we know that we will not get these changes without a real struggle. That's what that thumbs down meant. But if we stay involved, if we share what our fellow teachers said at this meeting and our experiences to our coworkers the next day and get them involved, we do have the power to make these changes happen and I hope that you, the board, our employer will work with us to make that happen too. Thank you.
Michael Vigil, Melissa Azari, Carmen Cordova.
Good evening. Members of the board, superintendent Dr. Negron, fellow educators and members of the New Haven community. My name is Michael Vigil and I'm a proud science teacher at Betsy Ross Arts and Design Academy. For three years, I've had the privilege of working with New Haven's incredible students. What I value most is witnessing the moment when a child grasps a new concept. That spark of understanding is the reason I and so many of my colleagues dedicate our lives to this profession. But that dedication is being pushed to its breaking point. The passion we bring to our jobs is being overwhelmed by the conditions we face every day. Across the district, we are seeing an alarming increase in resignations and retirements. We watch dedicated, experienced colleagues walk away and their position often remain vacant for months, stretching the rest of us even thinner. This is not just about burnout, it's about basic safety. The conditions in some of our buildings are frankly dangerous. We are talking about concrete stairs missing perfect protective treads, creating a daily hazard for both students and staff. We're talking about a school parking lot with eighteen parking lot lights out, forcing educators to walk to their cars in near total darkness. Soon, because of the time change of our school, our students will be dropped off in darkness as the day gets shorter. These aren't just maintenance requests, these are symbols of neglect that tell us our wellbeing and that of our students is not a priority. But we are here tonight with a solution. A fair contract is the solution. Our proposals address some of these problems. Our most seasoned educators should not be experiencing pay cuts due to rising insurance costs. A fair contract is more than just about compensation. It is a commitment to providing safe, respectable and professional working environments. It is a tool that will allow us to retain excellent teachers our students deserve and attract new talent to fill these vacancies. When educators feel safe and valued, our wellbeing improves and we can bring our best, most focused selves to our students. Our working conditions are our students' learning conditions. A school with crumbling stairs is not a great learning environment. A school where teachers feel unsafe and undervalued cannot be the beacon of support our children need. By agreeing to a fair contract, you are not just investing in us, you are investing in our students. You are choosing to create schools that are safe, supported and staffed by dedicated professionals who are here for the long haul. We urge you to work with us. Let's settle a contract, let's settle a contract that respects our profession, guarantees our safety and builds the schools our students and this city deserve. Thank you.
Melissa Azari, Carmen Cordova, Jessica Light.
Hi, my name is Marissa Yetsey. I know it's a weird last name. And I'm proud to be the band director here in New Haven at Morrow Sheridan School. My band and instrumental program has an enrollment of over a hundred and twenty students each year. Every day I get to see the joy and thank you, I get to see the joy and confidence that they discover through music. From the first squeak on a clarinet to the moment that they stand tall, performing in front of an audience of, we always have over four hundred parents, siblings, family members and peers of the students. Our students are bright, they're creative and they're resilient and I love working here because they inspire me every day. I want to share that I once left New Haven Public Schools. I taught at Hill House High School for a while. And I went to a district that was only ten miles away. It's a twenty-minute commute. And the difference in the resources was astounding. But I chose to come back on purpose. I came back to New Haven because this is my community. I'm from here. I live here. I love this city and I want to serve the city's children. But what will keep passionate educators is a fair contract that allows us to thrive and not just get by. First, we need to raise the wages and keep up with the cost of living. Too many teachers are leaving New Haven for nearby districts where they can earn more and support their families. Our student, our students lose when we can't retain the talented educators that they deserve. Second, we need appropriate prep periods for the work that we do. Prep is not a break, especially for large programs or teachers that serve over many grades and many levels. It's when, for somebody like me, I arrange music, I plan my lessons, I organize performances, I fix instruments. I have to fix over a hundred and eighty instruments all the time. I have to clean these instruments to make sure our kids are having clean equipment that they can put their mouths on. We need to, I use this time to use inventory to make sure that we're keeping track of where these instruments are going. And to make sure that these one hundred and twenty students have the structure and lessons that they need to succeed. Without that prep time, the quality of instruction will suffer. Finally, we need respect and support for our workload so teaching here is sustainable. We want to keep, sorry, we want to stay, we want to stay in New Haven. We want to keep our building strong, we want to keep building strong performances, strong programs and lasting relationships with our students. But staying here needs to be accommodable, supported by the resources, the time, the compensation that make this work possible. Our students deserve better. They deserve teachers who can afford to stay, who have the time to prepare and who feel supported in giving them the very best. I came back to New Haven because I believe in this community and in our students. Now we need you to believe in us with a contract that gives us the tools to continue the work our students deserve. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, members of the New Haven Board of Education, parents, community members and fellow teachers. Thank you for the opportunity of speaking here today. My name is Carmen Cordova Rolon. I am a teacher, bilingual teacher at Clemente Leadership Academy. I'm here to speak in favor of better salaries and improved working conditions for our city's teachers. I'm in support of whatever has been said here and what I have written here has already been said. So I'm only going to add one more thing. Sixty years ago, I entered the school system. I come from a family of teachers. My grandmother was a teacher for her life. And I believe every one of us that is here is here because a teacher taught you to read. A teacher taught you to have values. A teacher taught you how to manage your life, how to grow, how to inspire you, how to go beyond your capabilities. And I remember my teachers dealing with the same issues sixty years ago that we're teaching, that we're dealing with today. We need better salaries. We need better conditions. And this is not just about fairness, this is about the future of our city. Our best talent is sitting in our classrooms. And we inspire those kiddos every single day, no matter what. Because that's what we are here for. Not because it's our job, it's because it's what we love to do. So if you remember, who taught you how to read? If you remember who inspired you to be who you are right now, that was a teacher. So I urge you to prioritize the issues that you have heard here today in your budget and policy decisions. And let's send a clear message to our New Haven public school teachers that you see our job, that you value our commitment and you are ready to support us. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jessica Light. I've been a teacher in New Haven for over fifteen years. I'm also a parent. And everyone, well, a lot of people know I've dealt with a lot of struggles through the years and a lot of successes. And I am often asked why I don't just leave. So I want to tell you why I don't just leave. The other day, my child was supposed to be doing their homework and I found them in a hammock in my backyard. And I asked them, why are you in the hammock in the backyard? And they said, because my teacher taught me that if I took some breaths, calmed down, I could persevere and do anything. Last week, I was putting up a bill to, bullboard, blah, whatever. I was putting up a board, celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. And a student I didn't even have walked past me and just said, yes, you celebrate me. That's why I stay. I have a mailbox in my room. Any student can write me a letter because I tell them that I always care, but I don't always have time to talk to you. And I got a letter in that mailbox last week from a student that says, I was going to tell my mom I was sick today, but then I remembered, I have your class. So that's why I stay.
Dr. President, we have two raised hands online. First speaker, Kathy Gonzalez.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kathy Gonzalez and I'm a parent of a fourth grader at Nathan Hale. But before I share my story, I just want to thank everyone who spoke before me. You're all incredible parents, teachers, students. You all deserve what you're asking for and you deserve so much more. So thank you for taking your time and giving up so much to teach my children here in New Haven. So here's a little bit about my family situation. On August twenty-fifth, during New Family Orientation, families were told that Nathan Hale School was fully staffed. And that felt like a moment to celebrate absolutely. But on the evening of September eighth, we received a message through Aptogy, which in itself is a whole different disaster, informing parents that starting September fifteenth, one of the fourth grade classes would be without a teacher. We were told we would be updated once a new teacher was confirmed and we were invited to reach out with questions or concerns. I later learned that the fourth grade teacher would be moving up to teach fifth grade, but how and why since this school was already fully staffed according to administration. The news of losing a teacher was deeply, deeply concerning, especially since last school year, my daughter went for long stretches without a certified teacher during her second grade year at Nathan Hale. And luck, here we are again. I am being asked to extend grace and understanding, but it feels ridiculous that I have to be in front of this board again, expressing many of the same concerns I raised last year on behalf of my daughter. We're now entering the second week without a certified teacher. Okay, less than two weeks, be patient Kathy, I get it. But there's already been at least one day of Miss Special and I do worry what else is happening or not happening when my child comes home from school, telling me that the adult in the classroom did not have access to basic things such as a computer, a whiteboard, electronic, I'm assuming, or a walkie-talkie. Parents were told that substitutes would be supported, but that doesn't sound like support. And I know that any parent in my situation would have the same worries. At Open House, there was no teacher in my son's fourth grade classroom for parents to meet. When I checked Power School, there are no updates in any core subject areas since the original teacher left. Prior to there being a substitute in the classroom, there were assignments going in almost every day. And what's really disappointing, I still have no way to directly communicate with the substitute despite asking the principal for contact information last week. Nathan Hale family should not have to go through this again. I asked that the board take action to ensure that our children have the certified teachers and resources that they need and deserve, as well as regular and appropriate communication throughout the process. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Kanel McLennan.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Keneal McLennan, a parent and resident of New Haven. My children also attend Nathan Hale. As Kathy Gonzalez just noted, a pretty traumatizing event last year of not having a certified teacher. And I thought by the end of the school year, that was a thing that we would never relive. And I was quite surprised that when we got the email that, again, round two, here we go. You know, zooming out or kind of on a macro level, listening to the educators and listen to the the issues at hand from an educator's standpoint, from a governing standpoint, I can see and understand. But at the end of the day, I cannot deny the look on my daughter's face, the trouble in terms of trying to learn some basic things that I would take, wouldn't say take for granted, but would say that should be happening in the hours of school. When I come home to look at her face and see that she is pausing, she doesn't have the confidence to engage in something that should be a regular process throughout the day. I pray for the teachers in terms of the ones who understand, who can get down to the level of the kids that need that extra help. I'm not denying that cities and towns are not feeling the strains of financial woes. But at the end of the day, it is the student that is being affected. And I'm hoping and praying, but also I am very active in terms of my commitment to the solution, whatever that may be, if it's teacher salary increase or just understanding the broader issue. I'm just hoping that those who have the power to make the change for the students to achieve what they need to achieve will be done. I must say that we have stopped all extracurricular activities at home because my focus is when I come from work, what do we have to do to make sure my kids are successful for the next day? And that is a wholehearted commitment, which I've had all the time, but it's such an intentional thing, not having another one of my kids now to have a teacher, it's as if I'm gearing up for another battle. Which is not fair to my kid, it's not fair to the teacher, it's not fair to the school, it's not fair to the school system, and it's a bit larger issue. But at the end of the day, our kids are at the focus and they cannot be failed. So I'm looking forward to, as one of the speakers said, if there is any rebuttal or opportunities for the Board of Education to respond to some of these concerns or questions. I'm not sure, I'm kind of new to this process, if there is a, a way to see a response, but I look forward to that if that's a possibility in the future. Thank you.
Dr. President, that concludes public comment.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of September 8th, 2025. Mr. Wilcox?
I move we approve the minutes of September 8th, 2025.
Second.
Thank you, that's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? We'll vote, Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Doing something new, yes.
Thank you very much. Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez? Ms. Cologne?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, the motion carries. Next is the personnel report. Dr. Negron?
Good evening, Board. I'm hereby requesting your approval for tonight's personnel report.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Dr. Joyner?
I move to approve the superintendent's personnel report.
Thank you.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? We'll vote, Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Ms. Cologne?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, that motion carries. The Finance and Operations Committee Action Items, Mr. Wilcox?
All right, thank you very much. Before I get started, is there anything anyone would like to move separately? And not hearing anything, I'm gonna need to move the resolution separately. I've been asked to do that. It's kind of a hoop we have to jump through with the state. So there are six of them, so we'll just pop into it. I move that we approve Resolution 11.01 and that the Board of Education accepts the Betsy Ross Project, State Project 093-0332, as complete.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? We'll vote, Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Ms. Cologne?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes, that motion carries.
I move that we approve Resolution 11.02 and that the Board of Education accepts the new Helene Grant Project, State Project 093-0365, as complete.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Ms. Cologne?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicker?
Yes.
Yes for me, that motion carries.
I move that we approve Resolution 11.03 and that the Board of Education accepts the Engineering and Science University Magnet School Project, State Project 093-0357, as complete.
Second.
That's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Ms. Cologne?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, that motion carries.
The next three involve approving grant funds from the state. So I move that we approve Resolution 11.04 and that the City of New Haven and Board of Education approve the use of the funds as outlined in the attached accounting document. And this is regarding a non-priority grant for the roof replacement at James Hill House High School.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote, Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Ms. Cologne?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, the motion carries.
Next, I move that we approve Resolution 11.05 and that the City of New Haven and the Board of Education approve the use of funds as outlined in the attached accounting document. This is regarding a non-priority grant for the roof replacement at Wilbur Cross High School.
That's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote, Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Ms. Cologne?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, the motion carries.
I move that we approve Resolution 11.06 and that the City of New Haven and Board of Education approve the use of the funds as outlined in the attached accounting document. And this is regarding a non-priority grant for the roof replacement at Truman School.
That's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Ms. Cologne?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, the motion carries.
And now for the main motion. I move that we approve the three abstracts, two memorandums of understanding, the three agreements, the two amendments, the two purchase orders, the three data sharing agreements, and the three contracts as outlined on our agenda.
That's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Ms. Cologne?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, the motion carries. Next, our students' report. Ms. Cologne? Mr. Ailey?
Yeah, we're gonna go up.
Great, thank you. You can stay there, you can come up.
You can move to the next slide. Yeah. Okay, so just want to reiterate some goals for this year. So we definitely want to, for Citywide Student Council, increase student engagement, meaning like when we create slides through Citywide Student Council, have more students put their input in instead of just student representatives kind of creating themselves and kind of talking at students. We want to improve organizations, so like creating calendars for upcoming events, such as like protests, opportunities for student organizing and stuff like that. And we also want to continue creating a point person for every school. So currently, right now, like we have a few for each school, but we want to continue building that. Yeah, next slide. So for example, this is how a calendar would look. So this is how September looks. We had a meeting with some student leaders from each school. We have our protest against you on the 25th. We have the, Leslie was talking about it for the NHFDO Books for Kids. They asked if we want to bring out some students to volunteer. So we put that on the NHPS Citywide Student Council Instagram. And then we also want to do another Students Closet, a free drifting event. You can go to the next slide. Okay, so kind of reiterating, these are the events happening. And we also got our Citywide Student Council date. So one of them might be September 26th. We're still working that out. But the next one is October 24th, September 12th, January 23rd, April 24th, May 22nd. So feel free to contact us if you do want to attend those because they're super cool. And yeah, next slide. And then I just also wanted to talk about the technology free policy. It's been great. There's definitely been reduced distractions, and students have been way more engaged, I've been noticing in my class. I'm way off, I'm more off my phone. But I do think to continue supporting this phone ban, we need to install a few more implementations, such as like designated areas with supervision for personal devices. Because for like College Board logins, you can't log in without having a verification code. So that can make it kind of difficult. And also, if there's any way to enable personal email access on school computers, because we do have a lot of students that need to be able to access their personal email for college apps and college classes. And maybe even providing teachers with magnets to use for class-related tasks, just because the Chromebooks are very slow. And yeah, so, and there's not always enough Chromebooks for each class.
Are there in discussions before we continue with the last slide? All right. So after some time, we are still negotiating with Savaro Health. I'm not sure when the first governance meeting is, but I'm implementing it so we can discuss the negotiations there about stroke advocacy and to classrooms. Secondly, the food table policy has been approved by Food and Services around last week. So now that, now I'm forwarding the document for governance, I think, or FNO, whichever one. And lastly, we're working with the College Board to add the district-wide seminars about standardized testing preparations and providing more information about advanced placement courses, scholarships, that sort of thing. It's still in the beginning stages, but we have started talking with them when we hope to have afternoon classes and/or in-school classes for test preparations so far. Any questions?
Yeah, some other question about the last one?
Yeah.
Is there a contract or negotiation involved?
No, 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 not yet, not yet. This is still in the beginning stages. So I'm still just like talking with them so far. They are willing to help out a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Also, just, well, one request, if you could include the slides or send the slides to us, and we can also post them online. And my comment is, I think it's maybe going back to your first slide. Good job just continuing the momentum of student engagement and making the leadership meetings where the various representatives from the schools come together kind of more interactive, more representative, and bringing the topics forward that the other student leaders bring up. So I think that's going to bode well. So good job thinking about that. And then my last comment is on the technology piece for the phones being locked down. Just good thoughtfulness about when a device may be needed and what may be a good supervised opportunity for that. I just held on to your language and appreciate you thinking about that and bringing it forward for further consideration and action.
Thank you so much.
And one more to add on to the College Board thing. So specifically, College Board is endorsing it, but it's mainly the Princeton Review that's trying to help out specifically, which is a test preparation that has been accredited by basically everyone, and especially private schools, which they have been having a lot of success. So soon after a couple months, probably send out like a memorandum of sorts into the Board.
Thank you. Dr. Joyner?
I'm gonna answer, Dr. Benitez, go first.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for the update. I'm excited that you continue to make a priority, the engagement of all students. Wondering, I have a wonder. You have, you have a student climate liaison position for every school that was part of a policy we approved last year. I believe that Ms. Abbott has been working with that group or is in the process of working with that group. I don't know if that's something that you have information about and that you are able to kind of use that army, because I see it as an army, but I shouldn't use that word these days. But you could use this group of students to support what you're trying to do if you're not already doing that. The other thing is, I'm wondering if students are, student leaders are able to have gatherings to just, you know, have conversations with students. So it doesn't have to be every month, but if you are doing some sort of gatherings where people are discussing what they are concerned about so student leaders can hear. But my, my other question regarding that is, if I'm a student leader, what are, how am I, how am I learning how to gather information even in my day-to-day in schools? And can we support students in that way? Or are you doing that already? I don't know if that makes sense to you.
I'm gonna answer the last two questions that you asked. I'm not sure about the first one yet. So the student liaisons will be the ones gathering info about climate issues around that. So as I, as mentioned before, I think when this position was first being created, it's gonna be a bi-weekly thing. We're gonna be choosing exactly eight students, two from each grade. And then we'll be asking them about issues, their opinions, their school climate specifically, and the district climate. And as we're gathering these many information, we will present it to the Board, and then hopefully we'll find solutions.
And then to talk about the student leaders. So over the summer, student leaders actually met over Zoom because we find a lot of complications being able to meet in person just because everyone has like a lot of day-to-day things and they can't make it. So yeah, we hope to continue student leaders meeting over Zoom when like, for example, the protest happening. We want to set another meeting up before it happens to see how many people have to turn out or how many people they have confirmed. And kind of just keeping that up. And also, we'll have Citywide back up again in October. So that'll be a big help in making sure our student leaders stay motivated and also continue to organize. Yeah, does that answer your question?
It gives me a better idea of how you are trying to gather information and also support each other. Again, when, as you continue to work with Ms. Abbott, if you find that there are skills that your leaders may need, that might be something to discuss with that department. They should be able to support you guys. So just wanted to make sure that if we created this, that you have the support to make it happen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. Dr. Joyner?
Mr. President, first of all, let me commend the Board for reinforcing and energizing the students on the Board. And I love this Board because that's what we're doing now instead of some of the stuff we used to do when the Board was different. And I feel good about it. And I feel good about that. Um, to, to, to further reinforce the students. Uh, uh, as I was sitting here listening to both of them, I had a civil rights flashback. Because the civil rights movement had a lot of students in it. And some people might not know that before Rosa Parks refused to give up her seat, a fifteen-year-old sophomore in Montgomery, Alabama named Claudette Koven refused to give up hers. But they didn't use her in the movement because she had gotten pregnant. And um, you can read her story and then we should, we should be studying that. I'm hoping that in, in our history classes, we're teaching that. And uh, there's a great book called Coming of Age in Mississippi by Ann Moody. And she was a young woman, teenager in Mississippi who was brave enough to confront the injustice in that state. And of course, you always pay a price when you, when you step up for right. And there, there are two people in this room who were students like that. One of, one of them is to my right. Um, she went to school right here at Jack Robinson and she participated in um, well, it's King Robinson now. But she participated in s- in planning teen life conferences uh to help students come to grips with the stuff they were dealing with. And the young man had just left the room. Scott Marks is a labor leader who grew up in New Hallville and organized labor movements all across the country. So I just wanna continue to encourage you to be poised, intellectual and classy because that's what you are. And don't let anybody tell you anything differently because you take a stand that substantiates your belief that this country is a place where you should have liberty and justice for all, not just a few. And that you can have free and responsible speech uh to, to, to call attention to the problems that we're facing because you're in for a dark period. And um, there's a meanness in the country that causes me to think back to how things were when I was a child in North Carolina. And you have to, you have to have some armor to get through that. And you have to be able to organize. You always have to take the moral high ground. You can't have anybody telling you that you're taking an immoral position. Because this is a country based on a moral principle of doing to others as you would have them doing to you and a political principle of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And, and that's what you should, we should, we should continue to be anchored in. And so I, if I had, if I had my way, I'd have a whole family of kids like, like you guys. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Does that conclude your report?
That does include.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. And thank you, board. Next, uh Superintendent Report.
Uh, good evening again, Dr. Harborough and board members. Um, today we wanted to take an opportunity to um share with you and the public um, the amazing work that has been happening in the arts in our district. And um Supervisor Max Indis here with us today. Um, she's put together a detailed presentation. Don't be scared, there are lots of slides. She's not gonna read them all. Uh, but she's going to be making a very comprehensive presentation because we want to celebrate the fact that, yes, we're always speaking about limited resources, but we want to talk about how it is that we are elevating the fine arts um for students and through the amazing partnerships that we have in the New Haven Public Schools. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Holly Max and our Supervisor of Fine Arts.
Thank you. Hola, I'm Bian, Bian Benitez. Uh, hello and welcome. Uh, I'm gonna show you how we're elevating fine arts, not only for our students, but for our teachers, for our families, and for our surrounding community through partnership. So throughout the presentation, I have some strategic operating plan indicators that are in the upper right-hand corner where I have a little red circle of how things are aligning. The New Haven Public Schools Fine Arts Department is committed to aligning the portrait of a graduate within all of our content areas as we go forward with writing curriculum in grades pre-K through twelve. We do have one hundred and forty-six educators across music, visual arts, dance, and theater, serving students in grades pre-K through twelve. We offer part-time positions with New Haven Public Schools as well as part-time through Aces. And I just wanna take a moment to thank the Board of Education for saving our twenty-nine positions when we were just a few months ago in jeopardy of losing twenty-nine teachers. So thank you for the support. Thank you for the support, Dr. Negron, and thank you for the support, Assistant Superintendent Redhannans. I appreciate guy, you guys so much. And we have phenomenal educators in our department. We offer over a hundred and seventeen courses, pre-K through twelve. We also have added an additional eighteen courses and thirteen that are for college credit in fine arts. For our professional goals, we have fostering collaborative relationships, delivering high-quality professional learning, support excellence in teaching and learning, ensure equitable access to fine arts and enrichment, and leading strategic curriculum development opportunities for teachers. Um, in fine arts, we've developed a new mission and vision uh within our content. We changed our title to Fine Arts to unify all of our teachers together. Uh, we have, I've assessed curriculum, the needs for that. We've built a curriculum team where we have two fine arts educators in each content. So going forward, we're gonna model after science. I've created a walkthrough tool that's gonna be digital this year where we can gain feedback on, um, you know, let's say we wanted to know if all of our teachers were using Word Walls. That's uh on the checklist. And we can see if they're using them and linking them towards formal vocabulary. Uh, we have a lot of field trips in fine arts this year. And last year, all of our third graders are gonna be attending the Yale University Art Gallery. All fourth graders will go to the Yale Center for British Art. All pre-K through twelve theater students have an amazing opportunity at the New Haven Museum where Longworth Theater currently has an exhibit up that's very interactive and they customize it for pre-K through twelve. Our high school visual arts students, they'll be selected by the content um to go to Creative Arts Workshop during the month of February as they highlight artists of color. And they, that'll be determined. Last year, we had Marquis Brantley Senior, who was um black artist. He did, he had giant portraits of all men who had influenced his life positive way or negative way. And then he had paintings that were unfinished on the bottom floor. So we selected three schools' painting classes to go and meet with him, watch him finish his paintings. It was a really valuable experience for our students. Uh, our grades three through five will attend New Haven Symphony Orchestra Young People's Concert. And we've been able to get that gratis last year and this year. Uh, nine through twelve, we're gonna have tours of the Bynne Key Library as well. And then we have so many performances. Uh, I attended a hundred and forty, maybe a couple more during the day and at night to see our students performing. And it really gives me a good view of what we're doing curriculum-wise. Whatever they're putting up for an event or an exhibit or performance, I can tell really what's happening in the classroom as far as curriculum. Uh, but we have our Spring Sing, we have Choral Festivals. This is a picture of all of our high school choral students at Wusli Hall. That's in collaboration with Yale. We support the community through parades. Uh, we had hundreds of people come out to Spring Sing. We had seven hundred students in the audience. And uh, there was a big participation during that one. We had a sing-along in the beginning and half of it was in Spanish, half of it was in English. And we were excited to offer it digitally this year as well as offer student performances to showcase their school with a special song. Um, but we support through parades with our marching bands. We even had Hill House Band go to the National Memorial Day Parade and represent our city and our public school system, which was awesome. And then we go to a lot of festivals. We have concerts. We're gonna have a new instrumental music day that we're gonna alternate with Spring Sing annually, dance recitals, Hispanic heritage celebration, Black history celebration. I always tell our fine arts teachers, let's not limit it to the month. Let's celebrate culture all the time, as we should. So this is uh some, these are some pictures of our student artwork from the District Wide Art Show that was in combination with Arte Inc. It was at the Atwater Senior Center. Arte provided a great spread. We had hundreds of community members and families come out and enjoy a really good time. We had over four hundred pieces in the show. And we also had a jury from Yale University Art Gallery come and choose select pieces, our elite pieces, about twenty of them. Um, and there, now we call them our Gold Star Exhibit. Those twenty pieces will go on to a show in the lobby of Fairhaven School for a fundraiser. We sold over fifty pieces and that's a picture of a little girl from Davis School in the bottom right-hand corner. She was excited to get her proceeds. One hundred percent profit went to our students and her award letter. And I always tell them that they are now professional artists because they were able to sell their work. They get really excited. They're adorable. We created the New Haven Public Schools Collaborative Arts Calendar. Everything that is free or discounted for our families to attend goes on this calendar. And I'm able to share it with community partners to add things and it's color-coded, whether it's a Yale event, a city event, an ECA event for the Educational Center for the Arts for Aces, and a community partner event is highlighted in green. But this way, it's a one-stop shop for our families to be able to pick something that's free or discounted for them to do on the weekends. And we're working towards free transportation for them from community partners as well. So these are just some pictures of our shows. Our students are so talented because our teachers support them. And it is fantastic to see all that they're capable of in fine arts. These are our community partners with fine arts. These are the ones that we're currently partnering with, meaning we have programs with these folks before school or after school or during the school day in the Fine Arts Department. With teaching and learning, we're striving for high-quality professional learning is definitely our goal. Last year, we had three focus areas, which were content pedagogy, content literacy, and social emotional learning. This year, I'm super excited that we're adding culture in the classroom. And we were able to do this in partnership with the Grammy Museum and members of the Recording Academy. So the Grammy Museum Collaboration started in December of twenty twenty-four in partnership with Pat Smith and the Grammy Museum. And the New Haven Public Schools Fine Arts Department developed a mini-conference decided to, designed to elevate arts education across the district. This initiative was made possible through generous sponsorship and community collaboration and served as a powerful platform for professional learning, creative exchange, and celebration of the arts. So this was in the Autobahn District and we kind of took over the whole block. We had music at Neighborhood Music School, um art at Creative Arts Workshop, dance at New Haven Ballet, and theater within Aces Educational Center for the Arts. And this was entitled The Creator's Classroom: Student Spark. We had about thirty-four presenters in total. We couldn't have done this without all these people. Fantastic people, not, and I hate to not mention, our IT department was there for support, transportation, communications, the print shop at Cross. And of course, our administrative team, Dr. Negron, Ms. Redhannans, that's Pat Smith in the middle. Maura Galante is one of our teachers at Brata, as well as the department chair at Creative Arts Workshop. And then the newest member of our team is Ingrid Schaefer. She teaches uh Educational Center for the Arts and has just come on board part-time to help out with theater. And on that, I have links embedded in here, but we don't have much time. But we have a lot of positive press coverage and a link of about twenty people who helped us de- uh develop all of the sessions for the content of this. So we had the Creator's Classroom, uh the Culture in the Classroom delivered by members of the Recording Academy for our first session. And what was really great is they made it travel to art, music, dance, and theater. So we had a full hundred and seventy people in that session. Um, there were five theater sessions in collaboration with Aces at ECA, New Haven Ballet, and teachers Hannah Healy and Danielle Sarnelli from Brata also taught sessions. And they got to learn about techniques, improv, social emotional learning, illiteracy, tie-in with Leo Tolstoy. And they even performed his play, The Three Questions collaboratively on that day. Dance, we have five sessions in salsa, bachata, tango, modern dance, in combination with ECA, New Haven Ballet, Elisa's House of Salsa, and uh Brata's dance teacher, Nikki Claxton. And it was really fun that she brought students from Brata, so they got to do dance demonstrations with our teachers and for our teachers. We also had, um, oh, we had a wellness session with a Dr. Powers and Dr. John from the Chiropractic and Wellness Center of New Haven. And then we had twenty hands-on visual art sessions, imprint-making ceramics, all different types of classes for our visual art teachers. Thanks to Maura Galante, who did a lot of that planning. And I have Ryan Menezee here to speak about the art classes on that day.
Nice to see you all. So I'm Ryan Menezee. I'm the lead visual arts teacher at Co-op. This is my twenty-first year teaching, my fourth in New Haven. Um, and yeah, I moved here from the city where I was used to, I mean, I was very privileged, used to going to PDs at like MoMA, the Met, the Whitney, the Brooklyn Museum. Um, and I came here and I was like, what is going on with the arts here? I love teaching the arts. I'm, you know, a big advocate. Um, and then when Holly showed up, she is a champion, as you can see, of the arts. And um, this summer was transformative with the way that I viewed the Department of Education here. Um, it was, I mean, I'm gonna use a whole bunch of buzzwords. I know, you guys just got roasted before. I, I was here then too. So I, I'm glad that we get to kind of, I don't know if this is the end, but like, end on some positive things. I mean, I felt as a teacher, as that, and as an artist, respected, right? Engaged. I was doing printmaking and having authentic conversations with other art teachers that actually mattered. Not like, you know, find someone in the room to finish your bingo card that, you know, we don't need to do that. It, it was like, we, we talked about printmaking, we talked about how to use a kiln, we had, like, things that art teachers need to do and often. I mean, I'm lucky at Co-op, there's lots of art teachers, but you're an island. And so this felt really um like a partnership, partnership among art teachers in our district. And, you know, partnerships with all of these beautiful, amazing spaces and communities that are making art around us that feel so separate often. So this was really um a great thing to have the Creator's Classroom at the Creative Arts Workshop. Um, and if anyone has TetraPacks recycling, you know, the thing, we'll, we'll take them because we're gonna use them for printmaking. Um, we were very inspired by the work that uh we learned there. So thank you for your time tonight. Thank you for all you do. And um, yeah, I have two little kids at Davis and so I'm not going anywhere. I like to work in my community. That's why we came here. That's why I applied to schools, uh, to work in schools here. So um, please, keep up the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Menezee. And TetraPacks are anything that comes like a broth. When you buy a broth, what they do is they recycle that material and open up that container and then you can scratch the foil off and that's how they're making etchings out of recyclable materials. Also, we had thirteen music sessions, including our Culture in the Classroom session, along with songwriting, production, music of the Civil Rights Movement, social emotional creation, and a huge jam session at the end of the day. Uh, students from Co-op High School, Co-op Cooperative Arts and Humanities High School helped with stage crew the entire day. And then I couldn't believe it that at the end of the day, they got up and jammed with members of the Recording Academy and held their own and were soloing. And they were just fabulous. And uh, and we had one of our own, Ms. Helen Natter was killing it on jazz drums. And she's here to say a few words right now.
That's me in picture. It was so fun. Um, well, first of all, thank you for an amazing hire. Holly has done, yeah, we can give her a round of applause. The amount that she's done in one year just to kind of streamline and sift through what we offer. To streamline, oh, there we go, and sift through uh what we already offer and then just like diligently add, tirelessly add and create new things for us to engage in as artists, as um educators, has been phenomenal to be a part of and witness. Um, to your point, Dr. Joyner, we, we are entering dark times. And when all else fails, the arts speak. The arts keep us moving forward. And um, so it humanizes us, it inspires us, and it connects us. And I just wanted to speak to my experience uh at these two events at the PDs like um. Yeah, like my colleague here has said, I've been teaching for decades and never have I experienced a PD quite like the ones that we've been to in the last couple of months. And um, I felt, first of all, as an educator, I left with tools that I could use immediately in my classroom. I saw the positive impacts of those tools on my students in, the next day. And uh, the sessions that- And the sessions that Holly offered, as she said, were across all the disciplines. Every person in the Finance Department felt heard, seen, respected, and a part of what she created. They were relevant, they were well-constructed, they were culturally responsive and incredibly collaborative. So they were so vast that actually I kind of wanted to stay for a couple of days so I could do more than just the music. I wanted to do the dance. I wanted to do the art. I would have stayed all weekend, but it was just a one-day offering, too bad. So the PD gave me a chance to reconnect with the arts, to be inspired as an educator and to experience moments of being a student again as we entered back into the classroom with our own students. It energized me to begin the year with intention and renewed passion. And I saw that same transformation in my colleagues. Everybody left with a smile on their face, with something to take back to their students and help our students thrive. And things that I think, you know, like you were saying, the buzzwords, we left with critical thinking skills, stronger partnerships, and a deep sense of belonging and joy that we brought back to our classrooms to create that same belonging and joy with our students. So please keep supporting Holly in all that she's doing for us. You bring money into her world because this kind of PD is more than a one-day event. It's truly an investment in our teachers, in our students, and in artistic expression across our district. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much for speaking tonight. I appreciate your time very, very much. So through, we are very grateful for our sponsorship. We had a lot of sponsorship to pull off this event. This event costs New Haven Public Schools $0, which is wonderful. Yale School of Music was, we were fortunate to, they paid our honoraria for all of our members of the Recording Academy. And then the Chiropractic and Wellness Center of New Haven was another huge partner for us in providing lunch from the Loop Japanese Grocery and Kitchen for all of our teachers that day. We also had community partners that were not presenting. They hosted information tables during lunch to talk to our fine arts teachers and build relationships. And those are people that had tables. Every time that I do a Professional Learning Day or a CIA Day on the many professional learnings that are after school, I do a survey, a feedback, and a review based on the Harvard DataWise training. And I asked them, the teachers anonymously, was this relevant to your content? Can you, why or why not? Can you apply it to your classroom? Why or why not? What other suggestions do you have for professional learning? And that's how all of this was really created, was directly through teacher feedback. And then we go back to the drawing board and do more planning and expansion. So New Haven Public Schools is the first school district in the United States to partner with the Grammy Museum. Pretty excited about that. And this initiative, we want to be a replicable model for other urban public schools and demonstrate how to elevate fine arts education through partnerships like the Grammy Museum and your local arts community members. So in the Creator's Classroom, we're actually gonna be bringing it to the students. Is the Student Spark part happening in March, where we're gonna host at Cooperative Arts and Humanities High School, 150 students district-wide that'll be able to come to Co-op and do the same work with members of the Recording Academy and the Grammys Museum. They'll have classes in songwriting, production, culture, music history, and music industry. And the next year for the August Creator's Classroom is going to feature Latin culture and an inclusive salsa jam session for everyone. That was some of the feedback, is that the dancers wanted on the jam sessions, and the artists wanted on the jam sessions, and the theater people. So we're gonna make it collaborative for everybody at the end of the day. So thank you guys so much for taking the time to engage on this presentation, Elevating Fine Arts. Your support is deeply appreciated as we continue to champion arts education across our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly, and our amazing teachers for highlighting the great work that is happening in our schools and for underscoring the support that you feel you're receiving through your professional learning. So thank you. And Mr. Chair, with that, I conclude the presentation, but we open up for questions.
Thank you. Yes, questions or comments? Mr. Wilcox.
I'll just be very brief and say thank you very much for the presentation. It was downright inspiring to see all the good stuff that's been happening. I know there's been good stuff happening, but just seeing everything just ramped up, you're taking it to another level. Just also want to thank the teachers that were here, also be part of the presentation, you know, late in the evening. And just thank you, as this world just is crazier and crazier, the arts are gonna be, nothing else, an outlet for people to process and exercise their own creativity. So it's wonderful. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. It's my passion.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Mr. Juarez.
I would echo just the thanks that Mr. Wilcox expressed, James Maxson, and to all that were involved in this. It's really wonderful to hear. Someone with a background in the arts, it's, this is important. This is one of those things that I think too often gets overlooked or sidelined. And I think it's your creativity and your ability to seek support and funding, you know, outside of the school system is just commendable, amazing, and wonderful. I hope that more kids will be able to participate in activities such as these going forward. This is wonderful.
Thank you for the opportunity. And we're actually having, in the opening culture sessions for the Student Spark with the Grammys in the schools, we're able to reach 300 in the opening session and 300 in the jam session. 150 will be in those intense programs.
Thank you. Dr. Benitez.
Just wanted to say thank you very much for continuing to support partnerships that have been there, but also growing new partnerships. And I have to tell you, I cannot leave tonight without telling you that you have a board member who could be a partner in what you're doing with music. I don't know if you know that Mr. Juarez is a talented musician that could be supporting some of what you're doing. So hopefully you can engage him in something. But what I have to tell you about him and his wife, they would play music for my students at the former Columbus, now Fame, during lunchtime. And I still have kids come to me, well, they're adults now, and remind me of those days. So music is super important, and partnerships are super important because my school couldn't afford having real musicians come to our building to play for the kids, and we were very fortunate to have them there. So thank you, Holly, and keep up this, to me, arts open the mind. You cannot do math or reading if your mind is shut. So thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Juarez. I'm available on Wednesday morning. We could meet, create a collaboration. Let's do it.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. I want to share that, Ms. Holly, you opened up, and I was writing some things down, and I wrote "Elevating Fine Arts Through Partnerships." And so I was wondering, okay, what partnerships? And just the diversity of the things you named, 13 courses for college credit, create a digital walkthrough tool, engaging external professionals and resources, a community school calendar, and possibly free transportation from community partners. You spoke about including IT, transportation, the cross-print shop, that arts, including music, dance, and theater, a chiropractic and wellness center. Mr. Ryan spoke about conversations that mattered and recycling, which I heard, and jamming with members of the Jazz Academy, and that arts speaks. Sharing that it both humanizes and connects us. And then you closed a little bit with many sponsorships, such that the New Haven Public Schools didn't carry the weight of such an investment. Thank you. One, for all the work that you and your team have done. Thank you for the work that you do. Also for assembling it in a presentation so that we could see it in a very comprehensive way. And just a suggestion to the district, that if we haven't done so, to quantify these sponsorships. Because one of the questions sometimes might be, do New Haven businesses, does the surrounding community support New Haven Public Schools? And I think we can put a dollar amount to it. And we can also name the resources, and that can be a type of a celebration for how the community does rally around New Haven Public Schools. And it can also be, help get the creative juices flowing for other community partners who want to jump in to elevate something that is important to them or something that is important to the district. Thank you very much, Dr. Nagro, for you and your team and just laying everything out. And thank you for staying and presenting today.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no superintendent, well, there was a superintendent, but there's no president's report today. Next, teaching and learning and facilities naming reports. Dr. Joyner.
I'll get the easiest stuff out of the way first. Eric, to put Chakovsky in our meeting to plan the event to rename, to name the floor at the floor, the little system. But before the artists leave, I've been really thinking about, over the last year or so, how through the leadership of our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction and new appointments, we've created a more interdisciplinary mindset in the district. And that every content area has, has weight, and that it's all integrated. In fact, when you think about art, you can ask yourself, what would we know about human anatomy if it weren't for Da Vinci? Or some of the other artists that, before we had cameras, were able to illustrate the human form in all of its entirety, rather than, and even illustrations of cells and molecules. And where would we be without that in terms of visual arts? And in the case of the antislavery movement and the civil rights movement, Fannie Lou Hamer made a comment in Mississippi once, when things were really, really bad. And she said, "Sometimes the only thing we had was a song." And how poor people that most people didn't think anything of were able to organize without guns, without wealth, and make this country a better place. In fact, "We Shall Overcome" is an anthem that sang, that sung all over the world. They were singing it when they tore the wall down that separated East Berlin from West Berlin. And I'm sure many of you have been inspired by songs that you've heard that lifted you up at a time when you were despondent. In fact, that's what the blues is about. It's about recognizing your suffering, but also accepting the fact that you can do something about it. And so we should never, ever, ever, ever not provide the resources necessary to create and maintain this beautiful artistic community that we have. New Haven is the cultural capital of New England. And it's because of our art. And Mr. Suarez is a wonderful tenor, but your mayor plays several instruments, and he can sing. I know, because I sang "Stand By Me" with him. Yeah, he sings gospel as well. And so this is a community of multi-ethnic humans. And it's a community that accepts the range of human variability. And arts have done more to unify this nation than politicians have. The artistic community is the first community to accept LGBTQ folk. It's a community that accepts a blind keyboard player. A bunch of them, Ray Charles, Stevie Wonder, a bunch of them. And handicapped people. So when we don't have anything else and we're down and out, art can help rejuvenate us. So I appreciate it, and this is one of the best hires we've ever made. And I believe that she's committed to this community despite the fact that we don't have all the financial resources that we deserve to have. So I want to thank you, and also just brief report on the committee. We actually, over the summer, Dr. Nagro, Ms. Redhannans, Mrs. Redhannans and I, came up with topics, and we introduced those topics to the whole team. And we only made one change. And so that one change allows us to be able to deal with every content area in the district and have dedicated time for all the content areas to generate the kind of reports that you just saw tonight. Not only was it an art report, but it was done artistically. So that's all well and good. And so over the course of the year, we're gonna be going into social studies, science, math, all of our content areas. And we're gonna also be connecting everything we do to create an environment that enhances development of children. And we're gonna work together to try to deal with some of these financial problems that we have as well. So there's a synergy within the district and on the board and between the board and the superintendent and the district that is an opportunity for us to do some really great things. As long as we, to borrow from a song, "Walk Together, Children, Don't You Get weary." As long as we hang together and take tomorrow high ground, we're gonna be better. And we can't let external forces bite the red off our apple. And so I'm really pleased about what we're trying to do now with teaching and learning. And then the last thing that we're gonna get into is artificial intelligence. Like any human invention, it could be a force for good or a force for evil. Because any technology is only as good as the people that are wielding it. You can make gunpowder for celebrations, or you can make gunpowder to murder people. So I'm optimistic, and I've been that way most of my life, or I wouldn't have lived as long as I have lived. So thank you very much, and let's keep up the good work.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Any discussion? Seeing none? Mr. Wilcox, Head Start Report, Citywide School Building Committee Report, Finance and Operations Report?
All right, thank you. These will be brief. Head Start, we did meet last Thursday. There is a detailed agenda posted with a lot of information, and the minutes will soon be posted as well. A couple biggies, just to let you know. Currently, enrollment for Head Start is around 85%. There are 66 slots available. These are mostly at Mayo and Martinez. Staff are working on filling those. There is some people, some paperwork was at the pipeline. The other thing is, there is a follow-up review with Head Start on the incidents from, that we talked about earlier this calendar year, and that's come up in October 29th. They'll be going through and presenting the report of how, you know, they've made the changes that were required to take care of the issues. So that's in process. And then as far as Citywide goes, we did meet on September 11th. That report is posted. If you haven't looked at the new report styles yet, please do. There's a lot of information on there. There's also a lot of, there's some cost information, and you can kind of get a sense that even though we're not funded nearly enough, we're not funded on a per pupil basis like other wealthy districts in this state. There is still a lot of things that are happening, as well as there's a lot of things that are not happening and on hold. But at least there's, you know, it's being documented. And so recommend taking a look at that report, which is posted. And then finally, just will mention for Finance and Operations that we did meet last Monday, as that we did meet last Monday, as is typical. The minutes were attached to this meeting's agenda. We had financial reports for July and August. We also had a year-end report for fiscal year '25. We're still looking at a deficit there. And they're getting some final numbers, and we'll be working with the city, I guess is where we go with that. We also had a brief update on the budget mitigation for this current fiscal year. And it was reported that staff are working to answer all the questions that the alders have had, and getting them information that they need for their decision-making. We're gonna be getting updates on this until final decisions are made regarding the extra funds for this year, just in case we need to revisit this year's budget, which I'm hoping we do not, because anybody that's managed a budget mid-year, budget cuts or changes in income like that can lead to some drastic needs. So I'm hoping that's all gonna be avoided, and everybody is working together on this. So happy to answer any questions about any of those.
Thank you, any discussion? Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Governance report, Dr. Benitez?
Yes, good evening, board of it, members and the public. We will have a meeting this Thursday. And at the moment, we are continuing to update policies and continue to encourage every board member who has policies that they're developing or updating, to continue to send them to us. I want to thank the students for thinking about some of the work that needs to happen with policy development. And also, I want to thank the staff for alerting the Governance Committee on new developments in different laws that somehow impact our policies. One of them, the climate policy that we very recently approved, we will have to make some very minor changes, but you will see that some of the documents will have to change. So thank you very much, and hopefully we will let you see more next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. Any discussion? Seeing none, the Food Service Task Group? Mr. Wilcox, anything to share from that meeting, please?
Yes, it was a good meeting. We heard a report about, you know, how the beginning of the year has been going. We heard some information about how they're handling life-threatening allergies and making sure that everybody that needs that information has that information. We also discussed a policy that the students are bringing forward around food sharing. That's actually gonna be carried over onto next agenda for that meeting, so that staff have time to really look at that. And hoping that that will be completed at that point. We want to make sure that things are sustainable for the staff and address any potential union concerns which have come up in the past related to this. We just want to make sure everybody's had a chance to weigh in on the food side, so.
Thank you, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn the meeting.
I second that motion.
There were thurs and fourths. That's moved, it's been seconded, and third, Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Ms. Downer? Ms. Cologne left, Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Elecker?
Yes.